Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I will call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for tonight, October 14th, 2024. Ms. Rush, if you'll do the roll call.
Mayor Simpson?
Here.
Mayor Proton Morley?
Here.
Councilmember Ambrose? Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Ferre?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeifer?
Here.
Councilmember Marion?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeifer?
I'll make a motion to excuse Councilmember Ambrose from tonight's workshops.
All right. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero. Councilmember Ambrose is in excused absence. All right, we have two workshops this evening. We'll be moving with the 2025 Pay Plan update first, and I believe that goes to our Director of Human Resources, Ms. Gabriella Ballmer.
Thank you, Mayor Simpson, and good evening, City Council. It's good to see you again. Hope you are well tonight, and thank you for your time. As you mentioned, I'm Gabriella Ballmer, Director of Human Resources for the city, and I'm here tonight to share some information about our proposed updates to the 2025 Pay Plan. You will see this Pay Plan resolution come before you at your next business meeting, so tonight I want to give you some of the background information of the recommendations and answer as many questions as I can. Let's hope I can operate this. So I thought I would start with some workforce demographics this time. I know that you've asked me some of these questions in the past, so I think some of this information will be of interest to you and our community as well. So let's start with how many employees we currently have on our payroll. These are full-time and part-time benefited employees who are in our pay plan, so it does not include our seasonal or temporary employees that we have working on and off during the year. So this is our current count of full-time benefited employees. We have 745 employees in the city, and you can see there on the side how they are distributed throughout the departments. As a workforce, we are getting a little bit younger. I wish I could say that about myself, but not happening. But as a workforce, we are getting younger. Our average age is about 43. It was 45 about four years ago in comparison. And if you look at the chart on the right, you can see the generations we have in the workplace currently, and it gives you a little bit of insight as to why we're getting younger. So on the left side of the chart, the blue bar is what we were in 2020, and the red is current. And you can see that our baby boomers have dropped in numbers by nearly half since 2020. And then over on the right, our youngest generation in the workforce is tripled in numbers since 2020, and they will only continue to grow as they come of age and are eligible to work here. So not to be forgotten, Gen X is right there in the middle, holding strong, and then millennials do make up the majority of our workforce. Our tenure is also trending down, sad to say. It was 10 years, four years ago, and it's now eight. I think this is directly related to the turnover we've seen post-pandemic. So we hope to see that stabilize in the future, although I did read recently that younger millennials and Gen Z tend to stay in a job for about three years. So not sure if we'll ever see those larger numbers in the future, but really, our goal is to keep them here by continuing to provide them with career advancement and pathing. Forty percent of our employees live here in Arvada in our community, and I'm proud to say I'm one of them now. I moved to Arvada in the spring, so glad to be here. Next slide gives you a little bit of our demographics. What I did here is I put our workforce on the left and our community demographics on the right. Disclaimer, this is from U.S. Census data, so it's from 2020, but that was the most recent that I was able to collect. But you can see here, I put the donut chart up there to give you just a visual representation of how we mirror our community in terms of race and ethnicity. I think we mirror our community fairly well. Age-wise, we're also pretty similar there. Where we differ is gender. The community is more balanced, 50/50, female to male, and here at the city, we have a predominantly male workforce.
Ms. Ballmer, could we shed a little light on that? It could be contextual. Is it because so much of it is infrastructure-related as well as our PD force?
We do have large departments that occupy traditionally male-dominated roles, so police officers, our infrastructure teams like our streets and utilities, even parks workers tend to be historically male. That's not to say that we're not making strides bringing women into the workforce. It's just going to take time to balance those.
Thank you.
So speaking of gender highlights, I did want to share a little bit of the stuff we collect every year for our pay equity studies. We do small and mighty team. We have 274 women here in our workforce at Arvada. That does make up about 37% of the workforce. You can see a lovely representation of them there in that picture. What's really nice about this is to see that we're also making up about 35% of our leadership roles, and 62% of our executive leadership team are women. So we have a really good ratio of women leadership in the city, which is a testament to us doing our part to keep promoting women in the workplace. Fifty-seven percent of council are women, so just to share that. You can see where they are by a work system here represented, and that last statistic on there is something I'm really proud of. Our gender pay gap is almost nonexistent. We measure this every year, and it's less than half percent. So perspective here, Colorado's wage gap is about 13%, and the nation is around 17.
Councilmember Ferre?
So we're really doing our part.
I'm just wondering where the .04% is. Is it like one person is not, or is it across the board?
It's the average over all of our wages, so it's really hard to pinpoint exactly. It's just an average of our salaries of all of our females, average salary of our males. It really comes down to about $400 a year in difference, and that's really remarkable considering we only have 37% females, so I think it's a number to be really proud of.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, on to Pay Plan specifics. So the Pay Plan is strategically aligned to your council strategic plan under the Organizational Service and Effectiveness Work System. We have a service to foster an employer-of-choice work environment that attracts and retains a highly engaged, inclusive workforce. This mirrors our Total Rewards philosophy, which is the guiding philosophy for everything we do for rewards, pay, and benefits here at the city. The philosophy was last updated in 2022, and that did get approval from leadership and support from council when we updated it. We do strive to be an employer-of-choice in the Colorado Front Range. We want to attract and retain high performers who are dedicated to public service and be fiscally responsible in the way we manage our programs so that they are funded within the city's ability to fund. So you'll hear a little bit more about that. This makes up our Total Rewards package. A lot of these things are things that are highly competitive in the market, offered by employers similar to us, and things that our employees tell us they value the most. So up there on the top of the list is competitive market-based salaries and performance-based pay increases, which is what we'll primarily talk about tonight. They also value robust health and retirement benefits and comprehensive paid leave. On the bottom there are the more intrinsic type rewards, which are flexible work schedules, opportunities for advancement, and of course, a respectful workplace that puts people first. Okay, back to the Pay Plan. The Pay Plan is the city's tool for providing those competitive market-based salaries and performance-based increases, so I wanted to just spend a minute to make sure you all understand how it's designed and how it works. We have a grade and step system here at the city. Grades define salary ranges. So at the bottom of the slide, I hope you can see the detail there, is a sample of a grade in our professional job family. Positions are graded into a grade based on market value. So we go out and we look for comparable jobs. We determine what they're paid in the market, and we assign them a grade based on that value, and that's what makes it market-based. And then we recommend salary range adjustments on an annual basis to keep up with market movement throughout the year. If those are approved, employees receive those SRAs, salary range adjustments, in January. Steps define performance increases for our employees, so every grade has a series of steps in it, this particular one. Most of them do have 12 steps. Our police department is a little bit different. They have fewer steps, but most of them will look like this one, and employees are assigned to a step when they're hired based on their qualifications, and then they can move along the steps each year on their anniversary date, as long as they're performing well. And then performance can play a role in accelerating their movement or postponing it, depending on how they're doing in their job. All right. There's a fly on my paper. All right, so I'll move on to the market data and trends that we look at every year to determine what those recommendations should be. So there's a number of data that we look at, both externally and internally in the city. External job market trends and internal HR measures. We also look at survey data from our employees and salary surveys and pay data from our peer cities. We review this information annually, and we use it to make our recommendations for the Pay Plan and other rewards as well, and we do that as part of the budget process every year. So a little bit about the external data we look at. These are some, you know, a sampling of the statistics we look at every year. I put unemployment down as the bar chart here to show you how it's been moving over the past two years, three years of data here for you. You'll see our Arvada metro area, which includes Lakewood and Jefferson County area, Colorado, and then National on the right. You can see that it's been increasing. Economic experts say that a healthy economy will have an unemployment rate between 3% and 5%, so we're still healthy even though it's moving up. Arvada's gone from a very, very low unemployment of 2.8% in 2022 to 4% currently, so it does feel like things are getting a little bit better in terms of unemployment, and it's still very healthy. Labor participation in Arvada is really good. You can see here that Colorado is ranked fifth in the nation for labor participation, and Arvada is just a smidge higher than Colorado, so we have really good labor participation. And then the next statistic is one I'm really interested in, is how many unemployed persons are available per job available? And anytime this number is less than one, it means that there are more jobs and people available to work, and this is usually what creates that environment of poaching from each other and the higher turnover rates. So we are currently at .7, which indicates we still have a pretty tight labor market. We're competing for the same people in our market, and Colorado keeps creating jobs, so we continue to see that.
Mayor Proton Morley?
Oh, I was just curious, Gabrielle, on that point, how has that ratio changed over the past couple of years, and which direction is it going?
I know last year it was .5.
Okay.
So it's relaxing, but it's still tight.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Sure. So in summary, we do still have a really competitive market, especially for those jobs. You can see there trades, transportation utilities, are jobs where jobs are being created. We have, things are starting to relax from the extremely tight conditions we've seen in the last two years, but it's still very competitive, especially in those areas. Going to internal metrics, these are things we measure. Recruitment and turnover metrics are really important to us to see how we're doing in our city. We've hired 108, we filled 108 positions year-to-date, and that includes 69 new hires and 39 promotions. So we continue to move people internally, and that creates vacancies. We fill externally sometimes. We're glad to say that applicants for job posting is trending up. The bar on the right shows you that it's gone up a little bit, but nowhere near what it was pre-pandemic, so we're still struggling to get a really good applicant pool, and especially for those jobs listed here that you can see. Those are our hardest to fill. Despite that, we still are managing to fill most of our jobs, 89% of them, with the first posting and not needing to repost. When we do need to repost, it's usually for those positions there: police, crime scene, animal management, code enforcement, engineers, and jobs requiring a commercial driver's license, like our streets technicians, our utility technicians. However, I do have good news from a turnover perspective. It's trending down as well. We are currently at 7.7%. About one and a half of that is retirements, and if we continue at this pace, actually, this does not include September data, which is actually trending lower, we may end the year at less than 11%, which is the lowest it's been in over five years. So we're excited to see that. Employees who do leave and leave us feedback tell us they're leaving for better opportunities with another employer. This can include higher pay, better benefits, more flexibility. There's a number of reasons they do that. And then retirement is the second top reason, and then followed by personal, family, or changing careers, and that usually includes leaving public service. This year, we did do an employee total reward survey. We had 74% participation across all work systems. Employees told us they value competitive pay the most. This also mirrors what they told us they would leave for: higher pay and better benefits. They value pay the most by far, and then paid time off, healthcare benefits, retirement, and a flexible work environment, all things that are in our Total Rewards package. Okay, so I'm going to move on to market data now and share some of the data we look at for our recommendations around pay adjustments. We look at two types of data from a variety of resources. We look at the National Employment Cost Index, which I'll refer to as the ECI. This is like the CPI of employment and pay. It's reported by the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and it measures the cost of employees to employers, how it changes over time. So in March, they report this quarterly, but in March, it reflects what pay did the previous calendar year. So that's the first one we look at to see, you know, how are things going? What should we project? And that number was 4.2% in March, so the change in employers, the cost of employees to employers over the last calendar year was an increase of 4.2%. This includes all types of changes, like merit pay, bonuses, promotions. It's a whole bunch of things grouped together. Local salary survey data tells us how our jobs are moving in our market, so we go out and pull that from our resources like Employers Council and CML, Colorado Municipal League, and other survey sources. We also survey our peer cities, cities around us that are very similar to us. We ask them what they're doing and what they've done, and then that's the past data. We collect to see how the market has moved since we last updated our Pay Plan, and this also helps us age our data as we receive it, to age it towards the future when our next Pay Plan is published. So when we receive data, we receive it in January, and we don't use it until the next January, so we need to age it so it's not outdated by the time we publish our Pay Plan. Future projections tell us what employers are thinking they're going to do in 2025, and we get this data from a number of resources like the Society of Human Resources, Management, World at Work, and Employers Council, and Economic Research Institute. And national projections say pay will go up by about 4.4% to 4.5%. And then, again, we survey our local peer cities. Little asterisk there, but at the time that we surveyed them, not a lot of them really knew what they were going to do. They gave us best guesses, not firm, so we don't really rely on this number very much because it's not a lot of data that can be validated, but we keep it as, you know, we consider it in terms of what we should be aiming for in our future Pay Plan. So all of this leads us to a belief that we should be somewhere in the 4% to 4.5% category in order to keep our ranges competitive and our pay competitive, and that is the recommendation we bring forward to the city leadership during our budget process. So where did we land on this? So as part of the budget process, the city leadership team, the city manager, the Director of Finance, they look at all the different budget requests that are needed to be funded, and we land on the ability to fund a 3% salary range adjustment for all job families. And so that is where we are recommending we move with the Pay Plan for this year, a 3% salary range adjustment for all job families. We recognize that this is a little below what we would ideally like to see, so we've committed to revisiting this in the spring when we do get more data from our employers and we can really see, you know, did we fall behind anywhere? Is there any action we need to take, especially with the police families, since we know they are the ones struggling the most to recruit? So we're committed to relooking at that in the spring and bringing you a different outcome if needed, so we will be doing that sometime in March or April. So that's salary range adjustments, and then step increases are, again, the way that the city awards employees for their time and their contributions here in terms of their performance. We do have 70% of our employees who are eligible for step increases. Now, most of them are going to get between 2% and 3% on their anniversary date. Our police officers do get a larger increase because they have a shortened step plan, so they see theirs go up quicker, but they also reach the top quicker as well, and that's just how their market works. So overall, when these step increases land, they come at different times of the year, and giving all of these increase, step increases results in about a 1.46% payroll increase. So altogether, the increase to our payroll budget for steps and range adjustments would be about 4.46%. And that fairly matches close to what we're trying to aim for with that 4.5% overview. Along with those changes, we're also recommending 21 reclassifications. These occur when there are either significant changes to a job that changes their market value, or their market value changes significantly over time, and we usually measure that for a couple of years to determine, it's not an anomaly, it's going to be the market for those jobs. So we have 21 of those represented in our recommendations. This can be up or down, so I do believe four of them are actually going down, and the others are going up. We also have 22 job title changes. These are just changes to jobs that do not have a market difference, but the, either the job itself has changed in description, the job title better matches what those changes are. And then we have three new FTEs and one position that was set to end funding this year that's been extended, and all of those are listed in your packets. And lastly, here's the financial impact for all those changes. Does equate to about a 4.75% increase overall, or $3,500,000 to the budget. Salary ranges make 3% of that. Step increases, 1.46. Reclasses, .16, and the remainder is staff changes that have occurred over the past year, just catching up with the budget to make, true those up. And then new positions are approximately $580,000 add, and all of these are included in your proposed 2025 budget, able to be funded through the tenure model. I'm going to move on to other rewards, unless there are any questions.
Councilmember Pfeifer?
So I should probably, I ask this all every year, I think, but I always seem to forget this one. So if they're at a, so the way it works is they're put in a step number. So let's just, like the example you had here, there was like $60,000, it's like step four.
Yes.
Okay, you all right?
Yeah.
No? Okay. Do they, so do they get an increase in the step, or is it step then an increase on top of the step?
They do get both.
So what is the percentage to? So do they, because they're at different times, right? That's what I'm going to assume. So let's just pick the step four, $60,443. In January, they'll get a 3% increase to that. That could equate to 62, 257, but their anniversary is in March, but they're already at that, they don't really get a step increase?
They would move from step four to step five in March, so they get the 3% in January, and then whatever their next step advancement.
But if the 3% pushed them to 62, see, so in January, before they get their 3%, they're at $60,000 and some change.
Yes.
In January, they get 3%, because it says 3% to step five.
So what happens is this, this whole range will adjust by 3%.
Oh, it all, the whole range moves up 3%?
The whole range moves.
Then it's a step?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So that, in that particular example, the employee will get a 6% overall increase. However, that 6%, it's prorated based on when they get their step increase.
Okay. Yeah, that's a good deal. State doesn't get that. It's a, in a position for five years before you get a step, and it's only at the mid-range.
Yes.
So if you're at the mid-range, you don't get any steps.
Correct. It's a, it's a really good.
This is a really good deal for, okay. I just want to make sure I understood that.
Absolutely.
So you can actually see increases throughout the year?
You can.
Okay.
As long as you haven't reached the top.
Reached the top, but even if you hit the 12, do you still get the SRA or whatever, the actual 3%? So you just don't get a step?
Exactly.
So the idea is retention over the first 10 years, roughly?
Yes.
Eight to 10 years? Okay. All right, thank you.
Sure. Okay. Just wanted to give you a quick update on other Total Rewards we're working on currently and proposing. So this year, we have our healthcare. That was also one of the top-valued items of our employees, and the theme we saw from our Total Rewards survey is employees want to keep more money in their pockets, and so that includes, you know, better subsidies for healthcare, more affordable opportunities for healthcare. And so this year, we did, you know, after five wonderful years of no increases and being able to save money, we did hear that our healthcare is increasing. Inflation, the cost of prescription drugs, stop-loss insurance, all increasing at heavier rates, and we don't know if this is an anomaly here or if it's a trend. So what we decided to do this year, because we do have a medical trust we've been saving all these years over time, is we would like to absorb the increases for this year, which is about 8%, is what's projected, by covering that with our medical trust, so we don't pass that increase on to our employees and, or the other city funds. We're going to let the trust absorb those costs this year, and then we're going to get together with our Benefits Advisory Committee and start thinking about how we should change our plans to control costs in the future, should it not be an anomaly and we might have to make some difficult choices. So we want to get a committee together to help make those decisions.
Thank you, Ms. Ballmer. I really appreciate the committee. Yeah, by covering the 8%, which I fully support, I do have concerns about what happens the next year if we continue to see increases and the kind of shock that might cause down the line, so.
Yes, and that's why we'll be making some, we're pretty, we want to see if this is a, you know, just a blip, right? We do have a couple of extreme medical cases right now that are creating some of that stop-loss insurance stuff, and we're hoping that that comes back down. However, if it shows that we're continuing to trend up, we will make some, some necessary changes to our plan designs. We might introduce a more affordable health plan option, which is something we're researching right now. So we're prepared to make changes to not have that have a long-term effect.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Pfeifer?
Are you still working on this slide?
Sure.
Oh, no, are you still discussing?
I was just going to mention a few more things.
Go through them, and I'll ask at the end. Thank you.
Sure. So, so we really do want to not pass that increase on to our employees, especially knowing that we couldn't quite get to that salary range budget we were looking to do. Additional things we have done, we've introduced already this year for our police department, retention pay, which is there for them as long as they continue to have these high vacancy rates. Currently, I was told they have a vacancy of 19, which is about a 14% vacancy rate, almost 15, and as long as they continue at that level, they'll, they'll receive this retention pay. Equates to about $5,000 a year, paid bi-weekly. We also introduced bilingual pay for the police department as a pilot this year, and it's going really well. I think we have 12 employees on the program, and then we partnered with a company called Sigma to get them some really great heart health assessments for our sworn police. For 2025, we're proposing to go citywide with bilingual pay. We do know we have other city employees who have these skills that can serve the community, so we'd like to expand that since it's been really successful. We're also looking for ways to help incentivize our snow program and our emergency holiday pay. These are extreme situations. Employees have to provide service to the community, and they often have to work very long shifts. They might have to work, you know, leave their Thanksgiving table, things like that, so we're looking at ways to reimburse them for that. So we're looking at ways to reimburse them for that, that time that they spend serving our community in those very unique situations. And we also proposed increasing uniform allowances for our field teams so they can afford the rising cost of work boots and uniforms.
Well, it sounds like you're still working out the, the snow assignment pay. I was interested in what that was going to look like and.
We're still working on it, but we're close.
Okay. All right. I'd like to know about that some more.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. So what's next for us? HR is busy along with our payroll and IT and finance teams, working on, getting our workday system live. HR and payroll will go live in the spring. So we're super excited about this because it's going to bring a lot more information. We're going to have dashboards for our leaders and employees will have more transparent access to their rewards and pay and benefits. So we're excited to, to see how this changes our work in HR as well. And we're very, very busy on this project. So we have some rewards that are still on the table that we're researching and we'll bring back to discuss for further funding consideration in a future budget year. That includes those more affordable health plan options that are out there and then enhanced paid time off benefits to better match how our other competitors are doing vacation leave and time off. And then retirement contribution matches are something that our employees are really interested in. So these are all things that we are currently researching and will continue to do so for the next budget year. And that is the end of my presentation.
Council, any additional questions? Councilmember Marriott.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. And it's involves this pay plan, but really probably more directed at the city's financial position and budget in general. So this pay plan costs the city an extra $4 million for next year between salary, step increases, new positions. Our tax revenue is, is projected to increase by 3 million. So obviously, this is more than the tax revenue. Now, I realize it's much more complicated than that. Some of these employees are in enterprise funds where rates are going up and, and will be paid out of those funds, and so it's not a straight across. And the reality is, this pay plan really reflects inflation in human resources, in, in wages. This is how much more it costs. And I certainly would not try to balance the city's budget on the backs of the employees at all. They're suffering inflation just like everybody else is. But it does bring up a point that the city's, what I would call its net position, is going to be negative for next year, given if everything stays the same as what we have and what we have projected. Now, in my business, we watch that very carefully because if your position is negative long enough, you're, you're a shell of what you used to be. You know, you can only be negative so long. And you'll eat up all your, all your reserves and all your resources, and next thing you know, you're bankrupt and you're out of business. The city is, got robust amounts of cash at hand, but even it can't stay with negative position year after year after year. And so you think, you say, well, gosh, what do, what do, what do we do here? In my business, we can raise revenue. The city can attempt to raise revenue, and I think that's, some members of council are, investigating that for next year. I think that's a very, very precarious position to say, we're going to be in negative net position here, but, but we'll get more revenue by asking the voters to, to raise, raise their taxes when, you know, most voters don't really care about the net position of the city much. And most voters are suffering under great amounts of inflation, just like city employees are. And, and their, their, their pay is under pressure, just like city employees are. So it's this, it's this delicate and difficult, I think, balancing act. And to me, it shows that there really is action that needs to be taken on the city's budget. And it's not to short employees. I'll be supporting this pay plan because I certainly know that they are suffer, suffering inflation. And, and certainly, we, this is a really good place to, to work and a really good place to advance in your career. And we shouldn't change any of those things. We also can't say, well, we're going to fix things by counting on a tax increase because I think the chances of that are very, very slim. Excruciatingly slim. So I don't see that as a possibility either. The only possibility here is the city has to do things differently, or less of some things and more of other things. And it really points to a prioritization of what the city does in the city's budget. And it's really easy when times are good, when our tax collections go up every year in a, in an amount greater than inflation. We just take every little thing we do and we do, you know, it costs more, but we got more money, so we just continue doing that. Times like these are the chance to reshuffle the deck, to change what you do. You can't do that when times are good, but you can do it when times are bad. In fact, you must do it when times are bad. And not that I don't want to call these bad times, but when the city's net position has turned negative, it's the time you must do that. And so far, I haven't seen any of that. And maybe this budget that we have coming up, I'm unlikely to be supportive of. And maybe that's a little unfair because up until now, the city's net position has not been negative. It's been positive for the whole decade plus that I've been on council. But I don't think it's going to be that way for the next decade. In fact, I think it probably, without changes, is, is negative for the next decade. And so I think in the, under the, the thought of acting quickly and acting decisively, that that's going to be the challenge for this council going forward. You know, could have been this year. I don't believe this year it's going to happen, but certainly for next year and future years, that, you know, with these desires for extra human services and, and new facilities, if everybody remembers at the council meeting last Monday night, I voted no on a lease for the community table. And it wasn't because I have anything against the community table. I think they're a fantastic nonprofit in our community that does all kinds of good. But it was an additional responsibility the city took on for a facility for, for a nonprofit. And to me, this council needs to have a discussion about what's the level of support we should give nonprofits? And should we give non, every nonprofit the same level of support? Mr. Pfeiffer mentioned Peace Jam. Well, Peace Jam, you know, occupies office space and a historical asset that the city owns. It's very different than, than purchasing a new commercial facility for a different nonprofit to, to use. My no vote was really about further deepening this negative net position that I see the city in, entering into. And so, you know, I just want to, you know, take this long-winded comment as a way to say, I think this council has to be really careful going forward and very intentional about what you do. Because the days of for a decade, just doing more of what we've always done are not here anymore. And the, the, the people, the, the people we collect taxes from, the taxpayers, deserve a highly functioning city government in all cases, whether, whether things are, whether, you know, we're beating inflation or whether we're not. And, and I don't think we could or should be asleep at the wheel for a while until things get to be so dire that then you really have to, really have to make changes. I think the sooner you act, the, the better. And so I would like to make sure the council thinks about these in these terms, looks at these in these terms. I, I'm going to be supportive of the pay plan. So I, again, I, I would not say that we need to, you know, solve our, our economic woes on the backs of the city employees. That's absolutely not true. But that we do have to look at each and everything we do, how we do it, whether we should do it, how we, you know, which way we should do it, and what the outcomes are for the things that we're, that we're doing. And there has to be some place in a budget of this size, regardless of, you know, there's a lot of things in this budget, it's very large, depending on exactly what you count and what you don't count. But there has to be room in there for some things to change. And that's going to have to happen going forward. So thanks, I appreciate it.
Important present, oh, thank you. For this really important presentation, you know, as a former local government employee, we all know that pay and benefits are very important and it's especially for retention. And even in the lean years, the cities do retain good employees. And I applaud the city and HR and finance to plan for the next 10 years. And it looks positive and we will remain competitive. I believe that keeping good employees equals that we will provide good services to the public and to folks who come and work and visit Arvada. And I think that is essential. Our tagline is, "We dream big and deliver." And we do that for everyone. And we're doing it for our very important workforce, without whom we would not be sitting here, lights would not be on, water would not be flowing, and toilets couldn't flush. So I really think that it's important. And your statistic of over 40% of our employees live here in the city, they understand the importance of keeping the city running and doing it in a way that is sustainable and is very thoughtful. They're not running around making decisions willy-nilly and without a plan. They are being very thoughtful to make sure that they're spending taxpayer money in a way that is, it's going to be productive and allow the city to function in a great way. So I believe and I am optimistic that the city's revenue will, will increase. We may not see what we've seen in the past, but I think that the city will keep in a black economic area so that we will always be in a position to reward our employees and, and provide services to the public in a way that we've seen in the, in, into the future. So thank you to everyone for this. I think it's very important and I will be voting yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Linda, remember when we brought up this healthcare? I think you were presenting to us, and, and back then, you said, let's think big and outside the box. And you came back, both of you came back, and you provided a very robust healthcare program for our employees. And I would never thought to this day that we'd still be talking about zero increases to a, a plan that you all proposed eight years ago?
Ten.
10 years? Doesn't say a decade. Wow. And I would, I didn't know it'd last this long. I'm sure you didn't either. We could have been a different way.
We were dreaming big.
I'm sure you did. But, you know, that night was exciting because we leaned into the topic and innovative. And to this day, it's exciting to see something that could have been 8% increase to zero again for our employees. So of course I'll be supporting this. I, I do agree with some perspectives of Mr. Marriott because we have to be thoughtful and stewards of taxpayer dollars as well as making sure we have longevity. But again, it has nothing to do with pay. I think that's, there's other areas to deal with that. Our employees help us provide a DNA that we treasure here within the city, and they're the character of our city. So if we don't have that and those, those fine employees working for us. And I do appreciate the fact that you are doing, you've really, really embraced, you know, equal work, equal pay. That is super awesome. Those are great stats I haven't seen in a while. And I know it's hard for a lot of other organizations, but I'm glad we are definitely on the top of my eyes. So great job putting these together.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. I will echo everyone's comments, and I will just share one that I heard this past weekend, oop, sorry. Yesterday, they had the Ava softball tournament and Police versus Fires, the last game. And I would happen to be talking to the partner of one of our officers, and she noted to me that they had come here from another department, fairly advanced in the career, and noted how amazing it was, how well we took care of our people here. Just the disparity of where they had been before versus here had made a huge difference. And she told me, I don't think you hear this enough, how mu, how well you take care of your people, so I wanted to say it to you. So I'm now saying it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Gabriella. All right. Next, I will invite up Mr. Britton Thomas for our bond project updates. Hello, Britton.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor Simpson. Tonight, we'll be presenting the bond projects. We have our transportation projects as well as our utilities projects this evening. And we'll start off with our transportation projects. Typically, you'd be seeing Pedmeny here tonight, but she recently went on maternity leave. So, yeah. So you're stuck with me. We'll start off with Ralston Road, and, and we feel that this will be the last Ralston Road update as the project is complete.
Really?
Really. I can see we've spent a little bit over 24 million there. Change orders are listed at the bottom of the slide there. Moving on, a little bit different picture of our budget. On the left, that's our overall budget. Again, that we've spent a little bit more than 24 million. The construction budget on the right, we spent just over 17 million. And the project has received initial acceptance, which means it's in its warranty period. And that warranty period is two years. Since our last update, punch list items have been completed. Irrigation has been completed as well as repairs to a certain section in front of one of the new developments. And again, like I said, initial acceptance, and we're in the warranty period now. You can see a nice drone shot from our team there. That's right near Carr Street. And we'll look at some before and after pictures. 2018 at the top and 2024 at the bottom. This is near Ralston Central Park, Sinclair Gas Station there on the south. You can see new sidewalks, bus pads, new asphalt laid. You can vary, it's, it's kind of interesting to see how many cracks were in the road back in 2018 and nice and, nice and smooth now. Same kind of picture here. This is up towards Wolf Park. You can see new development that's come in in the last six years. It's some townhomes, I believe. This is some of the, oh, we actually had an overlay here. I guess it's not flipping through it. But we showed kind of the, the change between 2020 and 2024. Mostly, you'll see here just new sidewalks on both sides, again, new asphalt, and then the pedestrian lights you can see on both sides there. Some before and after right in front of City Hall here at Amman Street. Again, those pedestrian lights, you got the median in the center of the road there and new widened sidewalks. And here's right at Carr Street, the same features, new traffic signal here, brand new traffic signal. You got the pedestrian lights and widened sidewalks again, and new landscaping. And here we're at Field Street, more towards the west of the project. Again, those same features. You can see the pedestrian lights pretty well there and our nice new sidewalks. And with that, I'll take any questions on Ralston Road.
I see no lights. I must say, I, I don't know if I'm going to miss it or not, these updates on Ralston. Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
And I'll turn it over to Dave Bernard for 72nd Avenue.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. West 72nd Avenue. This is just a reminder of what our, our packages were. We had CP1 was our utilities, which just, we finalized some of the, the funding for that, this, just this past couple of months. CP2, we are about 99% done, just waiting on landscaping at this time. And now we enter our pause. Going back to that, the landscaping will probably be finished in the spring based on the seasons right now. And then we go into our long pause until we get the railroad agreements figured out, and then we will start CP3, which is everything east of Oak and crew, including the railroad For our budget, we're, this is our total budget for all three phases on the left there, and we are. we are pretty much on track where we're supposed to be. All the increases in the costs were mainly associated with the railroad design and the railroad bridge, so we'll see those increases on the next phase. Our owner's rep has mostly spent it this time. We have a few little things to take care of as the landscaping winds down, but we won't expect to see a change order for that until we start planning for CP3. And the same with our design team. That's currently the design response to the challenges we encountered during construction, and that's just slowly taking out of that remaining piece of the pie there. We're covered on all those things for the time being, and we'll get the change orders figured out as we get the estimates and the design finalized for CP3. Just on the construction side of things, like I alluded to before, CP1, we finally leased the retainage in this past couple of months, so that remainder got cut down a little bit, but that's actually money left over on that that we can roll into the next phase, that $89,000-ish. And then for CP2, we have about, that $1,007,000 is about, 1.2 million of that is the retainage for that phase of the project. So we are at minimal expenses at this time just to finish up and put the nice landscaping frosting on top of the whole project here. Just some more before and after pictures here. Just a reminder of what we did. We essentially took a two-lane rural road in the middle of the suburbs with ditches on each side, bike lanes on the shoulders, and we widened it to four lanes. We removed the ditches. You can see the joint sidewalk and bike lanes on the other side, on the sides of the road there that have just, we moved the right way back on many of the houses, and that's the general change in the cross-section throughout the whole project there. This is at the west end of the project down by Swadley Court. So the lane on the left side of the picture is where the two lanes merged back into one to cross Lading Creek. All right, there we go. This is a little further up the hill where you can see we did the same thing, ditch on one side, hill on the other, and we widened it, took out that sidewalk that's right next to the roadway, and put it up on the wall on the left sides. And then with the widening, we also had to put a wall below the road on the downside of the hill, so you can see that change. And we have the medians in the roadway as well, so we added some turn lanes too. So a lot, just making it a more modern road to fit with the increasing traffic over the years through this area. This is probably, you know, 20, 30 years of scale of change on this model of the road. And I'll just quickly go through a lot of these slides, just showing some before and afters here. This is the Sims intersection, lots, some new driveway entrances and parking lot changes, and you can see all the extra sidewalks everywhere. This is the south of the Sims intersection where we did a lot of work with the church. There's a storm drainage pond there, as well as they grew their parking lot and moved their entrance from north to the Sims, the side of Sims. And if you have any questions, please interrupt me.
Quickly, hasn't the county also been doing work on Sims?
Not that I know of. We have the sewer project where, down by where Ralston crosses Sims, the utility project down there. I don't think there's any county work.
Thank you.
But I can follow up on that if needed. This is Quail Street up the hill. You can see where we straightened it out compared to what it was and widened the intersection there.
I do have a question on that intersection. So on the south side, that T?
Yes.
The light for the southbound traffic? I noticed we planted two trees underneath the stoplight. Is that? And they're locuses, so they're going to be bigger than the traffic light. It just seemed weird to put trees directly underneath the...
Right. That's something we're aware of now in the plan, so we'll figure out if we're going to trim those later in the future or just remove them now when, that's one of the items we're watching.
Okay. Yep, thank you.
And then just on the other side from Quail, we have Pearson Court, which is, used to be an intersection onto the street and now is a dead end with pedestrian access through the wall there. You can also see the big new median we have between the lanes in that section. A little further down the street where the one major development we had during construction of the Sunrise Village, where it just took a large vacant lot and then put in about 20 new homes. And then at the end where the border between CP2 to CP3 is where, Oak here, we extended Oak Street to the north into those two properties, which are, one was planned for development on the left side there, and then on the right, that greenhouse is up for sale again now, hopefully for some development there, and that'll help, we've helped provide more access into those neighborhoods with this extension. Like I said before, is a picture of the landscaping we have in the median with some trees and bushes that went in there. We have to finish a lot of the work there. It's taken, it's been a challenging to add a miles' worth of sprinklers and plantings there, so it's taken over a year at this point. And with the season ending right now, it's going to go into next spring to finish the landscaping here. We're getting all the utilities and hardscape accepted at this point, and they'll go into warranty hopefully in the next few weeks. In the road, as of two weeks ago, the road is now open fully with no major closures anticipated. We have a speed limit of 40, which was the original posted speed limit there, so now it's the same, the original speed, but with twice the capacity from Oak to Sims at this Now moving on to our railroad submittal with the CP3, we recently had our track plans moved up. This was in September. Our track plans are approved to the 90% level now, and our bridge plans are on, we had our second submittal of the 100% bridge plans. Those, we're working through the details of the responses to those, the comments from the reviewers, and we will hopefully submit them sometime in the next month as we solve some challenges and questions that we've identified with these comments. At this point, most of the reviewer comments are really basic, really detailed kind of things that are easy to correct, so hopefully the minimal one submission more is what we can hope maybe too, depending on how the reviews go. And then we start the PUC application sometime soon in the next few weeks here, and that's another long process of, to get everyone on the same page there, more of an administrative process. And then the construction and maintenance agreement can go concurrently with that, but also is a very long time. So as all the, once the plans are approved, all the engineering is pretty much done, and it becomes lawyers, real estate kind of discussions to decide who's going to pay for what when we build it and who's going to pay for what when we maintain it for the life forever at this point, once the bridge is built. And that's the summary where we're at now, and just another picture of our trees and bushes that we've put down near Swadley there along the bike path, bike and pedestrian path.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation, and just want to acknowledge all the hard work I know the team has put into this very large project that has a lot of its own unique challenges, so I really appreciate that. And I think that it has made a huge benefit to this area of the city so far, so I'm very, very pleased with what I've seen so far. So I'm also happy to hear, I think, if I understood correctly, that we've made some significant movement with the railroad recently, if I understood your comment on that, because I always want to bring up, you know, when we, in previous times, when we needed to have some assistance from our state, our US Senator and our US Rep, we requested that and got some assistance. So I just want to check in if you feel like things are moving once again and in the right direction, or if you think that it may need, we may need to reach out for more assistance.
I would say at this point, the process is still very incremental. We did get a lot of approval on this last submittal compared, but it's also because the submittal before didn't go as well, and we kind of, the designers really changed some things up and made it more presentable and understandable and as well as practical and that. So that was where there's a lot of success in the process, but it's still just this laborious incremental progress, and any help could usually work. It's going to be on those next phases where it's more, it is more political and administrative on who's going to maintain and who's going to pay for what in the future. Those kind of discussions could maybe be more helpful to have some of that higher-level political influence to help get things along. But we don't know yet because we're not, we're not at that point. It's just been to this point is get the plans approved at 100%, and that's something you want in your pocket when you're going into those administrative discussions is the next, which will probably take, you know, a good year to a year and a half now to get those done before we can actually start construction.
Okay. Thank you.
And thank you for, appreciate the acknowledgement of the work and the challenges here as we've tried to, you know, we've changed the lives of the people that live along here, but the school traffic and the traffic in general is just so much smoother now, so it's noticeable now, and it's good that, it's good to everyone that people get to see that.
Yep. Thank you.
Remind me, we're at 60% design plans approved with the railroad, or we're going into 90%?
We have two sets of plans. The track plans are, just got approved to 90%. They were held up because our bridge was struggling so much, and our bridge is at, like, the third review of the 100% plans. So hopefully, the bridge is, the bridge is the complicated one, so hopefully this last submittal, we get these things checked off. And the track and detour plans, they're a lot simpler, so it should be easy to, it should be simple to get that approved at the same time here, but there is the potential for another round of submittals after this, and they're taking roughly, it should be, it takes about three months total, depending on the turnaround, but we had a longer, with all the major changes we made in the spring, it took us about six months to get the latest submittal in. So that's just months at a time on every new submittal, and it's, it just keeps pushing it down, everything else down the road a little bit. But we're not too far behind at this point. We just haven't started yet. That's the frustrating part.
Is our bond cap still looking secure? I know Mr. Archer isn't here this evening.
From what I understand, that's all, that's, this isn't going to affect that as much because we spent so much of the bond money already on the Ralston and the first two phases of 72nd.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Stahl.
Thank you. Good evening. So my agenda is the same as it's been every time we've provided these updates, but some fun pictures. On the water side, we're really moving into the last couple of projects being completed, and so we're showing pictures of that. 2024 Waterline is part of our annual water line replacement, and this year it's in the Sierra Vista neighborhood at Kipling and 74th over towards Sierra Elementary. And then also the 2021 Waterline, which sounds a little funny in 2024, but it's because it was an extremely complicated package and involves slip lining and crossing Wadsworth and crossing ditches, and so it just took us a while to get there. Picture on the upper right is super exciting. That is 70th Avenue along Danny Kendrick. I have a feeling those residents are very happy to have paving and concrete on their sidewalks, so it's progressing along. So just a quick reminder, what's financed by the bond and what isn't. The items that are grayed out means that we've spent the bond money. So we don't have a whole lot left to do on the water side with the bond money. The filter rehab is extending a little longer than we had anticipated, mostly because we were shocked it took us long enough to, that long to find something that kind of stopped us in a plant that old. It was kind of shocking that it took that long to find something to kind of trip us up. But we did find some issues with one set of filters that we had to take a pause, and we're starting up again this month. On the sewer side, again, what's covered by the bond and what isn't, and it's the trunk lines. So on the water side, as I mentioned, the filter rehab did extend, it's going to extend to about February, and that is because we found some bad concrete from filters built in the early '70s, and we had to take a pause to deal with that. And then the two water line projects, there was some good news. We got a heck of a bid on the 24 Waterline project, so we're actually showing a little bit less than our budget number. Yeah, we were, it was super exciting, and they seem to be doing good work. It's probably a little slower than we would normally see, but that's all right. So moving on to the graphs, this is a big blue bar because everything's under contract that's being funded by bonds. So we know what the cost is. It's no longer a projection or an estimate. And then on spending, we do expect the annual water line projects to be done midsummer, although the 2024 project does have through September next year if they want to take that long. And, but part of that's financed by cash, and then the filter project should be done in February, so finish paying that out in March or April, which means we should spend the bond money by the end, by the middle of the year. So on the sewer side, the last couple of updates, we have had Kelly Bradley, our central Ralston Truck Program Manager, give the update, but tonight, we're going to have Matt Amade, who's managing the North Trunk Line program.
Thank you, Mary.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for your time tonight, Council. As Mary said, my name's Matt Amade. I am the Program Manager for the North Trunk Line and one of the utility engineers that works under Mary. So a little bit about the sewer. CRT-6 is still ongoing. Mary showed that picture. They were doing some concrete on 70th Ave there. We estimate final completion to be in February of next year. CRT-7 is also still ongoing in construction. That one will be a little bit sooner, so we expect final completion in January of next year. NTL-10, we're still working through design, and I know there's some stuff with Adams County going on, so we're anticipating that we start construction early next year, and then hopefully can have that wrapped up by October of 2025. NTL-7, so you'll notice I actually changed, so we have the CMGC estimates for both NT-7 and NT-10 now. So we're far enough along in design for NT-7 where we actually got the GMP from the CMGC contractor. So we're currently reviewing that, and we hope to have that in front of the Council here probably in the next few months before the end of the year. And then N2, 2, and 3, that one is not CMGC, so we just have a design estimate there. We hope to have 100% plans by the end of this year, and then hopefully have that out to bid for construction. And then hopefully, construction's starting early next year and then ending December of So a slide very similar to the water one. Ours, we don't have everything under contract yet, so a lot of the solid marks are what is under contract. And then the design estimate is from either the contractor, the CMGC, or the consultant. Total need for bond projects is, of course, more than what we currently have, which is expected, and then there's the utility need through 2025, which includes some projects that are not bond-funded. So another one looks a little bit different than the water graph. Ours is really, we're getting to the point where we have a lot of design plans complete, and we're getting ready to get out to bid and start construction. So we're going to be really busy here over the next few months up to the end of 2025, but everything is still progressing as we originally anticipated. It's just kind of pushed back a little bit more than water. We didn't have a lot of those big payments upfront, so we kind of had to ramp up a little bit slower. And then with that, I'll hand it back over to Mary to wrap up the utility section.
So there is no change on this map from last time because although we have pieces and parts finished, the actual line or the dot is not completely finished, so it's still showing as ongoing. And then to wrap it up, this has changed slightly from previous presentations. Water bond projects are all in construction or completed and spent. Sanitary sewer are all in construction and design, and the sewer projects, as Matt mentioned, are at the 90% plus in design, so we are very close to being ready to get into construction. As we've said at every one of these updates, it's not the entirety of the need for both those noted in the bonds as well as the entire utility, or that utility area. And full master plan implementation will require additional revenue, which you've heard from, from Chris Gray. So happy to answer any questions.
I see no lights. Thank you very much, Ms. Stahl.
All right. Thank you.
All right. If there are no further questions or comments from Council, then I will close this evening's workshops and turn it over to Ms. Haley for staff updates.
I got nothing for you tonight.
But thank you.
Mr. Maloney substituting for Ms. Morris this evening. All right. With that, everybody, we are adjourned.